Request of A motion to approve the agenda as presented. Okay, can you second it?
Oh, second.
She Ellen said it first and then the. Okay, I'm in favor. Opposed, motion carried. Heidi, are there, is there anyone here for comment? Which if you want me to read the requirements. If you would like to speak for public comment, each person has three minutes and it's their time alone and cannot be passed on to anyone else's time. If you have concerns or comments about individuals, those are not appropriate during public comment times. So please don't say anything that would identify circumstances or persons or a group of people directly by what you say. Be respectful. People on Zoom are welcome to join with public comment. And we have a method, Heidi, of connecting with the people online.
Hannah would like to speak for public comment.
Okay, all right. Hannah is is online?
Yep.
Okay, roll set.
All right.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Awesome, I just wanted to pop in and see how the school is doing. I was checking out the state test scores. And that I would see how everything was going with you guys. I just hopped on and I saw that Tina was late and I'm wondering if the financial reports are are beginning to be on time again. But it was funny that the jump in was about accountability. And so as I checked this state test scores, you guys are still pretty low. And I realized the standards have been lowered again this year. And then they kind of changed how they were measuring. So it's going to be really hard to measure from the previous years as we go through all of the testing and you guys are doing your report cards this year. So I realized that attendance has changed back to being low, which might also reflect, you know, a disinterest in the learning in the community, which we had seen before COVID as well. The accountability is interesting for the board to seem like it it just kind of appeared in your minds. I think absolutely that there is a correlation between how your students are doing and the board's job and managing both, you know, the the teachers and those relationships, which you guys seem to be very concerned about, but also the the outcomes, which was definitely brought up. Your state test scores, you guys are still in the lower half, even with these generous the generous leniency that the standardized tests have afforded the schools this year, especially in Wisconsin. And so when you are talking about having a high functioning board and having high functioning outcomes and high functioning students and stuff, you guys aren't still still aren't a high functioning board. Your test results are showing that and, you know, even this attention to not not obviously reading even the book report is kind of a bit, a bit ironic. One of the things that you guys could work better on is systems, which you guys are talking a lot about. And I see in the school and through a lot of places with policies. And and so I have a great book and I would actually offer to buy it for each of you. It's called The Underground History of American Education, or anything really by John Taylor Gatto. I can reach out by email if you guys would all like to read that. I don't know if you'll have time for it, but it seems like the concern with systems might be misplaced in how it's affecting and how you guys can control or do less work in order to achieve a certain goal while the goals aren't being achieved and the systems in place aren't quite showing the results that you want. So it might be better to step back and kind of understand the systems in place for schooling before you guys are decision maker position, before you're in a decision maker position like you are now. So I'll reach out at the end here and make sure to have, you know, offer each of you an opportunity to get this book. I can send it to the school or however it might go, but.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hannah, Hannah, would you, would you please identify yourself and give us your last name?
Yep, Hannah Lendy.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else?
That's it for the.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Tool Pickert Washburn. At the October board meeting, there was a high school student that came in with a proposal for a vending machine in the school, had an investor and everything, did a lot of due diligence with that. He was looking for more protein snacks, energy and so forth. And then at the November meeting, you had asked for an update on that. And there was some concern about whether or not it was legal, but yet schools and businesses have done partnerships all over the country for all sorts of things. So I don't see where that would be illegal. I guess the other thing is the clip bars were dismissed out of hand as though they weren't nutritious.
The what was?
Clip bars.
Okay.
And there are a lot of different varieties of clip bars, but they are known for having more protein and more energy. So they are, they do tend to be more nutritious. And I know there was more in line with what he was looking for for protein and and energy. And there was a mention of maybe carrots or something, but I don't know of any student anywhere in the U.S. who would, you know, beat down the doors to go to a vending machine with carrots. I just don't know. But the main thing is he, it kind of bothers me because he presented it to the board. This was something he presented to the board and he had done cranks just about all the due diligence and you'd just have to maybe ask a couple of questions and and vote on it. To date, I haven't seen any votes or anything on it. But yet there was someone who wasn't on the school board who already told him that, nope, we're not going to do this. Because, you know, it's, you know, didn't want an investor making money off the students or whatever. So I just wanted to bring that up because when the school board is elected to take care of functions going with the school, nobody else should be, other people could gather information and bring it to you. But I don't see where they should be making the decisions for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the reports, the accountability update.
Yeah. Murado and Miss Berth and myself, so we'll wait for Cody's going to pull up the presentation. We're going to walk you through the results from our district and school report cards that were released in November. All right, if you could go to the next slide. I'm going to have Ivy's going to take the first few and we're going to kind of bounce bounce down. All right, so what was new for the 2324 school report cards is a few things, few changes. One of them is that the Ford exam this past year reflected the updated state standards. So those state standards updated a few years ago. It takes a little time for the state to update them on the Ford exam. So that was one change that was different. Whenever they do update standards, they also update the cut scores. And so this happened on the Ford exam, the pre-ACT security and the ACT. And then the other thing that happened that was a little bit different is the achievement score calculation. And so if you think about the four different components, achievement is one of them. And so the way they calculated this at the state level is different for this year only. And they actually did some scale adjusting in order to align the achievement scores with the 2223 school year. So and it's the reason behind that was for comparability and stability, but it did essentially lower achievement scores. So schools who had a higher achievement score on this year would then be lower to be more comparable to last year. And then that is just for one year, so that will not be in place next year. So those are a few changes from this year. And then just another thing, this isn't new necessarily, but it does factor in is just the three year average. And that's for all of those different assessments that we use. And so this would factor in the 2122 school year, the 2223 school year and the 2324 school year. And then also when it comes to the pre-ACT, it was previously the ACT expired, so it's a different assessment. It's been updated for two years to the pre-ACT, but we are combining or the state, I should say, is combining both of those assessments into that three year average. So just a little overview on what's new this year.
So does that in any way they didn't lower the standards for what what students are expected to achieve?
Right, so the state, the state standards themselves have been updated. And so those are similar to what they were before, but a little bit different. The cut scores themselves, what would be in the different categories of proficient or advanced, those did change to better align with those with those standards. And so, yeah, that's just kind of how they make that adjustment on the on the assessment.
And I would say for a long time in school districts, just to just kind of echo is that there, there was out, there's been some misalignment between the standards and expectations and then the overall scores that students were receiving and feeling like when a student score is basic, the skills and and the knowledge that we would see in the classroom would be at a much higher level than what a student was scoring on our state assessment. And so the state responded to that by adjusting those cut scores. And so it better aligns to the standards and better aligns to the assessment and instruction in the classroom, which is super exciting because it's difficult to analyze data and feel like, all right, we know our students are doing so well. And then you would get those forward exam results and feel like, ah, you know, how how are we not meeting it at a higher level? So.
So it's not that they lowered the standards, it's just they adjusted to to match the.
Exactly, to better match really the performance of the students and where they're at. So it's good, good news for everyone, but in the meantime, it kind of is causing this inflation for one year. So they're responding by doing this calculation to kind of essentially lower them as part of the report card because it's a three year average. And they didn't want to see schools like skyrocket and then.
I get it.
Yeah, deal with the aftermath of like, why did that happen? So.
All right, thank you.
So this is the same information as previous years. And so there's four different priority areas, the achievement, so that was the one that was really impacted by the change. We still have the growth, the target group outcomes and the on track to graduation. And so we have all four of these and they are ranked at different percentages or they're factored in at different percentages. So target group outcome and on track to graduation are always each at 25% of your overall score. And then the achievement and growth are going to equal up to 50%, but they are going to be different based on the percentage of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So based on most socioeconomic status. So the way that those are calculated are going to be different, actually all three of the different buildings. And then even from district to district and from year to year, based on your student population. High school only, you have student group participation in post-secondary prep opportunities and our courses. So that's something that's included on that report card. Next slide. All right, so here's the breakdown of what it looks like on our district report card. So you see 25 and 25 for the target group outcomes and on track to post-secondary readiness. Those are both going to be consistent over the years. And then this year, our achievement made up 18.8% and our growth score made up 31.2%. So that's how this date calculates our overall score.
And that's different for each school district.
Correct, yes, yep, and even each school within the district and from each year to year.
Yeah. Each building, yeah, we figured we'd just give the district so that you get. It's similar at both building or all three buildings, but it's a little different.
Next slide. All right, so here are the different accountabilities rating categories, ranging from significantly exceeds expectations of five stars to fails to meet expectations of one. And then you can see that the score range is how so when they use those calculations, they have a score for each of them. And then that score makes up that percentage. So to combine those is how you get that overall score. So you'll see the overall score in the next couple of slides for the district and then for each of the schools. And then where it falls within that range is also how many stars or what category it falls into. Okay, next slide.
All right, so I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the overall district report card because of course they they do combination one and some things to note, we did meet expectations as a school district, which is is great news. And really some trends that we saw looking through the data and digging in were the overall proficiency in our English language arts and mathematics does continue to increase year after year. So we are seeing those improvements, but remember it's a three year average. And so it takes really two to three years of that consistent improvement to finally like see that result on our report card. All three buildings scored above the state in our ELA achievement category. And the middle school and high school both were above the state in growth in ELA. So very, very strong scores in that area. We also saw our absenteeism definitely has impacted our overall score and, you know, part of that was the COVID pandemic for certain because, again, there's those three years of data and kind of the year, a couple of years after, and we're really working hard. That's a tremendous goal district wide attendance and ensuring students, because we know learning is essential, what happens when you're here. So something we're aware of and working toward remedying in terms of that results piece. We're excited to dig in deeper with all of you. All right, Cody, next slide. All right, so we're going to explore and just walk through each of the building report cards and the principals are going to take care of that. Next.
Right, at the elementary, overall score of 56.8, which would be on the few expectations category. That's a lower score and stars that we want to see, but there's lots of celebrations in the growth that we've seen this year. Each of these align with the school improvement work that we did last year and the previous year. So this, a lot of this information will seem very familiar to you. From the last year, from the previous year to this year, most recent year, we saw a 6.8% increase in proficiency in ELA. So students who were below basic and basic, students who are proficient in advanced, that proficiency increased by almost 7%. Our goal generally is between 3 and 5% is pretty high growth. And so we're far exceeded that and the same thing in math, we saw 13% increase in proficiency in math. And that was pretty exciting. One thing that is interesting is that these scores are also consistent with our district star scores. So you saw some changes in forward, right, in the way that the switch standards are reflected and the cut scores. There was no changes to star, those are based on national standards. And the cut scores have not changed and we still saw that same increase when we took our third quarter assessments last year. And so it was really exciting to see that is a consistent increase we're seeing across multiple data points and multiple assessments. We also saw within each of those categories, one goal we've really been working on is of the number of students or the percentage who are advanced. And so ensuring that we have the challenging opportunities in place. And so we saw a significant increase in the percentage of students who are advanced in math. And then this is actually our highest proficiency levels at the elementary since the 2015 and 16 school year when the Ford exam first started. And so it's something that's kind of interesting is the scores, the way that they're calculated, you can see it's a complex formula. Previously, we were at significantly exceeds expectations, we actually have lower proficiency levels. And so a lot of the calculations and the multiple factors that the state has integrated in just changes it so it's a little bit hard to compare us to previous years. When we just compare those levels, we're actually at our our highest levels and that's pretty exciting. We are higher than the state average in math and ELA, it's very close to state average, it's really just about 2% above. So we're excited to see that continue to grow in the future. But another big celebration is we are significantly above the state average in science and social studies. So we're around 75% proficient and advanced in both of those categories and the state average is around 50%. Lots of areas of growth, though, we want to see our overall score really reflect all of those smaller areas of celebrations. And so we're going to continue the work that we've been doing over these last few years with proficiency levels. Could we want to see that continue to climb and see those jumps at high rates? And you can see our target group outcomes, those are lowest score out of the four that were factored in. And so that's a very specific area we can focus on. So those are the students who scored lowest on the assessment. And then looking at all of the factors that impact that score, including their attendance and then several other factors. And so that's a great space for us to focus on while we continue to focus on proficiency for everybody. All right, next slide.
To see some similar areas with the middle school that you saw, the elementary school. Again, middle school meets few expectations, though our scores are better than they have been in the last few years, so it's growing. Our ELA courses were higher than the state average in both achievement and growth, which is amazing. Our ELA department works together really well and they are doing some amazing things to help our kids grow. Our math achievement grew by 7% in one year and that's a massive jump in improvement. But not only that, our growth went up by 16.2%, which is amazing. So what we had happening before and the changes that we have made over the course of the last couple of years is slowly beginning to show. And as we can go further along and start pulling out some of that old COVID stuff that was kind of going on, we're going to see our scores here jump even more because they're doing such a great job in math and in ELA. Our value added scores, which there's a section of the report card where you can see kind of like, if you see average growth, like each subsection of students based on race gives a particular score and a three is considered an average. The last couple of years for our middle school, those numbers have been well below a three. And then this year, when we looked at it, they are now either approaching or at or above three. So we are showing growth in our subsections of students as well as overall, which is really exciting to see. And we're just going to see that continue to go as well. We are going to continue to work in our mathematics area and growth and achievement. We have some plans moving forward about how we could do that moving into the next year. Again, like I said, working on those target groups. One thing I did add in there of areas of growth, we're continuing to focus on intruency and attendance issue, which is much, much better than this year and we'll see that next year in the report card, but continuing to work and push on that, meeting with kids, meeting with families and making sure that that is going on. Next slide, Cody. I just kind of wanted to show you how well the ELA department, the middle school is doing right now. So I just threw a graph in here that compares Washburn and how we're doing in the breakdown with the state average this last year. And so I know those numbers are really hard to see. So when you look at it by color, the light blue is the advanced, the meeting expectations, the approaching. So this would be advanced, proficient, basic, below basic. And then up at the top where the gray is, that's for the kids who opted out or taking the test. But looking at our scores, our needs or exceeds is at 53.2%. The state currently is at 52.2%, so we are meeting and exceeding above the state average in ELA. And the other thing, while we have 7.6 who didn't take it here, we're at 39.2% and the state is at 45% for basic or below basic. So ELA in general in our district is doing really, really well. So I just wanted to be able to give you a visual on how that change is and what that's looking right now, right now. Next one, Cody. We're starting looking at the high school, high school meets expectations with a 62. Again, our achievement scores in ELA exceed the state average. We scored above the growth in ELA as well. Our math is now scoring in line with the state averaging growth, which we were behind before. Now we're catching up to the state average in our growth. And again, the same thing happened with those value added scores where we were really low before per subgroup. And now they are at or above the three average that you would see across the state. So that is going to help us again, again, continue to work with math, truancy and attendance and focusing on our target groups and how we can help with their attendance and the learning that they're getting. And then the next slide, you'll see, I've got a few more slides about high school stuff. Here's how our ACT scores compared to the state. And you can see in every area, with the exception of writing, we scored higher than the state average on the ACT. Our writing was right smack in line with it. And what we have done to boost our writing is introduce a a writing structure across our whole building that students are using, learning to write, so they're not getting all kinds of different wonky, do it this way, do it this way, do it this way, they're getting one consistent way to do it. And I believe that that will raise our writing scores as well. So in terms of our ELA department, again, doing really well. The other areas of it, we were really close, but maybe below by like a half a point or a point across the ACT. But we'll see those going up as well as we do some more things within the building. And the next two slides are about our post-secondary preparation. So I wanted to show the weird thing about this part is that they use data from 2223 for our post-secondary stuff instead of 2324. There's like a year leg that shows up. So the data you're actually seeing from 2324 before we even had some programs in place. So when you're looking at the 2223, you can see our advanced courses, we were only at 15.4%. Dual enrollment was only at 5.9. And at the bottom for the industry recognized credentials and workplace, we didn't have anything at that point in time. So we got all the DPI, we got some of these are really tentative numbers that we got from the, but I just wanted to see how we would compare this year. Our advanced courses went down a little, but we're making a few adjustments where we're opening up availability for kids to be able to take some AP courses at younger ages to help with that stuff, with some of that stuff. But you'll notice our dual enrollment, that's our start college now, early college credit stuff, that has gone up significantly. And then we have built in now our industry recognized credentials and our youth apprenticeship program. You can see that we now have seven kids from this last school year that completed some industry recognized credentials, that could be through welding or tech ed things, they get certifications through. And then our workplace learning are the number of kids last year who completed the youth apprenticeship program. This year, this particular school year, we have 14 kids in youth apprenticeship. And so those things are growing as well. So you're going to see those numbers keep growing higher and higher. Next one, Cody. This is our arts courses in 2223 and with the exception of dance, because we don't have any dance courses here in the district. You can see we are killing it in the arts right now, which is absolutely amazing. To me, that really reinforces the fact that we're not only athletics oriented, we're oriented in the whole child of all the things. So art design, 48.4% of our kids have taken some sort of art design. Music, 41%, theater, which I was like, we have a theater class? Turns out we do, but it's the tech ed, not tech ed, show choir tech class that they get credit for when they're working with all of the lights and the sound and they're getting, they get credit for that, which I didn't realize was happening. I thought they were just part of show choir separately, but no, that's a separate class. So that's how we've got our theater, which is, you know, seven students tied to the state average for that as well. So we have a lot of really great things going for us and we have a lot of great improvement that's coming down the pipe as we keep doing the things that we're doing. So it's exciting to see where we're headed in the future. Next slide.
All right, so some final facts that we pulled together that administratively, we all believe, and I know our staff also believes high impact instruction is essential for student learning to happen, to occur. Our implementation in the district of high quality materials and mathematics, that happened, I think, two years ago, right? We're in year three, is that correct? Or it's year two this year? And the science of reading and literacy, the training and the work that's happening with alignment of resources is working and will continue to work to improve student learning. Attendance is essential, is an essential component of student success, both in school and beyond. And we believe that deeply and are committed to that work. We will need to continue communicating the role of the state test students, staff and community stakeholders, because it is an important measure of which we need to, you know, adhere to in a whole. And it also does help guide our decision making in our work and that's a good thing. You know, we are a continuous improvement school and we want to get better. But one thing that has come out of the, at the state level, I would say like administrator wise is the development of a local report card, lots of school districts are talking about that and utilizing a lot of the same components of the state, but adding in their own local pieces that are relevant to the culture and the work happening in their school and community with input from from them. So that is something that we've discussed, Ivy and Angie and I haven't really liked to begin the work on on that to, you know, to bring it to light. The other thing that I would say statewide is just some of that data that you're looking at is old. You know, it's it's three, sometimes it's four to six years of data. And while it is all important, it it isn't always as accurate of a snapshot as the data that we have happening in our classrooms and through our screening. And so, you know, we'd love to be able to bring more of that to this table more frequently so that we can really see the impact of what we're doing now. While this is an important piece, there's a lot more that we can do to ensure we're getting results.
Question for Ivy. I know that we were looking at some of the testing that you're doing, you know, the star and that was supposed to be a kind of indicative of how we do on the state testing. Did you compare those to see if they were very similar?
Yes, they were, yeah. So we did see a necessary inflation score, we saw it reflect the same. We, where we saw the increase in students from proficient to advanced, we saw it reflected in star as early as last March. So, yeah, it was really nice to know that what we're doing here not only is accurate, but that the student learning and the growth that we're seeing is across multiple measures.
And that going back to our book study, you know, that's kind of where we're looking at the results based. You know, if we can't look at just that score and that one thing, because there are so many other things. And especially that, you're not going to see the change that fast when it's a three year rolling average. So those are things that we have to keep in mind too, as we're looking at, if we look at going to normal results based, that there's more to it than this one state test.
Well, and this is why I love this idea of a local report card, because we can really see how we're doing on the goals that we set for the district. You know, and like that might change or not change, but it might help us.
or not change, but it might help us make decisions that like that benefit our district as a unique entity in this, this community.
Well, thank you, it looks very good. It looks like we're definitely moving forward, which is what we wanna do. Excellent. I really like the art and music, getting that piece of the.
That's fairly neat.
That's a little different than what I'd ever seen before, so that was nice to see. That piece of it. Okay, long range planning committee.
I got some highlights, like there was, there was three kind of like major highlights.
Okay.
And I'll let, like Steph, uh, and Denise obviously put in their to that's, but, um, but one thing that we talked about was like moving to meet in a little bit more of a like quarterly, report-based, looking at data-based kind of like decision-making. Um, with that, we realized that we needed to, um, increase our like tenure plan, not obviously just for our middle school or high school building, but we have to work on this for our elementary school buildings. That like may change the, the work of the, uh, long-range planning committee in the, um, in the upcoming months. Um, and then also moving to make the long-range planning committee meetings after this board meeting. So we like met just last Monday, like we will meet after the board meeting, just because so many decisions, um, especially for this like specific implementation of, uh, of the referendum, um, uh, outcomes, uh, will just depend on a budget and depend on this approval and depend on that approval, so the long-range planning can keep doing like their like dive in work to the, um, specifics of the tenure plan. Um, so. So we're looking at a quarterly meeting instead of monthly, right? Or every two months?
Every other, yeah, we're gonna do every other during this design phase.
Right. Like the, the idea was to like move to this like quarterly structure, but I think because of that elementary school, we have to get some, just some more data about the tenure plan and making sure that that tenure plan is working for the district. Um, every other month.
Yeah.
Every time.
So on the tenure plan, I mean, there's elementary items on there.
So there are no. Were.
Correct.
Yeah, and then I think they were removed during, or no?
No.
That's a, but it's still on the page.
I think, yeah, just to clarify, so the tenure plan that we have, we received from Myron and I S G, um, as part of this referendum process and sure that all updates happen, is just separate from our district tenure plan, which has all of our middle school, one elementary. So I think it's just emerging.
We need some merge.
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah, we're doing, figuring out. Yeah, yes. Because we have more than just this building to.
Correct. Just when she said that, I was like.
We didn't have the elementary. Well, it was one, yeah, so Myron, we contracted Myron to do all of the assessments, all of the planning, and they did great for the middle school, high school.
Sure.
And so now we have to just kind of go back to our district work. So we had a ten-year plan that we were working on and it was a year, maybe two years ago. Then we're like, okay, we're nearing the end of this ten-year plan and so many things have gotten done and so many things are accomplished. Um, we need to do tech pointing, that's gonna be millions of dollars. We need to do windows, we need to work on the H bag, so present referendum, you know? Okay, referendum passes. And now we just have to update our district tenure plan, which Myron was able to update our middle school, high school tenure plan for us and give us a lot of like information and depth there. And we just didn't have an outside agency to do that for the L H T.
Sure.
Okay, so that's why I left it out.
Okay.
Sorry. But that was the conversation, it's like, oh yeah, we need to make sure that those are over.
Yeah.
It's kind of the aha moment.
Like, just leave the elementary, they'll be fine. All right, superintendent's report.
All right, well, there, of course, a lot happening in this district. It is December and, um, it's a short month for our students and staff, but it's certainly busy. So it's great to see basketball games happening, dance, gymnastics, forensics. I'm seeing, um, lots of really amazing students, the speed team bouncing and jumping above the district office on four o'clock every day, so, so there's lots of really cool things, uh, district-wide happening. Uh, and at the elementary school, we have a craft country speed trail that is being developed around the building for the community and students to use. And a skating rink, I'm thinking is well on its way toward, um, being created. So lots of outdoor activities, kids are sledding and, and just excited about the snow. So it's, um, it's really a good time, right? All seasons of the year to get outside. As Tina and Stephanie mentioned, uh, Myron and I S G met first with the administrative team and we did a kickoff, um, in person, which is fantastic, kind of going into this next phase. And we met Lee Spindler, who will be our new, um, consultant through Myron, and then they were able to join long-range planning. So right now, it's a large focus on kind of schematic design and then we'll be looking at kind of an initial budget, um, sort of into early spring and then there'll be more design and then another budget conversation. So, um, looking at kind of the timeline, that, that's like a shortened version of sort of what will be happening. I believe they'll be here Monday.
Monday through Wednesday.
Yep, to do, um, I S G specifically, to do some scanning and some picture-taking of the building to better, of course, orient themselves three dimensionally for all of the, the drawings that they'll be doing. Uh, so they're, yeah, they're right on top of things and, and moving forward, we're really looking forward to the next phase. Um, our technology director, Cody Check, and Matt Larson, our library media specialist, were able to go to the SLATE conference this week, um, and brought back a whole host of great ideas as we transitioned to Google. Um, I put them in the line of like attend everything you can for, um, Google app, Google works, workplace, I guess, workspace for education, and so they dove into that as well as A I, of course, which continues to be quite a topic and an area, um, school districts are gonna want to navigate and grow into. Uh, so some fun things, maybe, I think January Matt is planning to come in and present sort of a STEM presentation and share some of those, um, really amazing kind of STEM-related things he's doing in the library media area, which we're looking forward to. Um, today, the buildings did have a safety drill, um, did a lockdown procedure using our local law enforcement. And I was able to talk with, um, Kenny Johnson this afternoon and he said that it went really well and, um, you know, some, some little tweaks and things to kind of just reiterate upon, but overall, very, very successful staff and students. Um, it was handled really graciously, I think, um, it's been done well here before. So I could tell that messages were sent home to notify parents, which was also really great. So, um, important to do those drills and be ready for, you know, any kind of a situation that we might encounter. Uh, and let's see, I guess, last but not least, we're working, continuing to work on our strategic goals. Guaranteed and viable curriculum work is happening in both buildings, weekly singing guides and E L A adoption work, um, Ivy's leading and she'll be sharing more about that upcoming in the next month. Um, our college and career readiness work, we did just, uh, Angie and Jen Letts were able to connect us through the direct admin program for next year. So we will be signed up through Skyward, actually communicates with the U W system and it's all campuses except Eau Claire, La Crosse and Madison, I believe. Will, um, using student attendance and, um, overall class rank and G P A will direct admit students, um, send letters home without anyone applying to the campus. So they will, yeah, and then they can go to.
It's a great program.
That's amazing.
Yeah, they'll go to a portal if they want to accept, um, one of those entries, like B W Ashgash or Stevens Point or Superior, and, uh, they will be directly admitted into the school. But the, yeah, pretty amazing thing.
That is amazing.
Yeah, it's really great. I know, sorry to share that as well.
That makes life easier for a whole lot of people.
It, yeah, just all of, to think of the hurdles. Yeah, you have to go through to get to that point if you maybe don't have that support and you get there and it's.
Sure. Nice. Can I just go kind of backwards for a second? Um, and at, at the moment, I can't pull up your report. But I know that at the end of the report, you've had something about vending machine.
I did.
Tell me what it said again.
Um, I have been looking into them, looking at the cost of them. Um, on average, we're looking at about twenty-five hundred dollars for a very pretty basic vending machine. Um, looking at the possibility of running it through our food service, just because of the rules that are in place through D P I through the state when it comes to vending machines out of school. What you can have in them, when you can have them turned on, all that kind of stuff. Have held off on it a little bit because there are some new policies that have been developed or are being developed through Eola that we still need to go through as a district and look at how we want those. And so haven't, haven't pushed too hard on that yet until we figure out what we want our policies to look like in addition to the rules and structures that D P I has set forth for what we can do, um, with vending machines in our school.
Okay.
Yeah, but it directly cannot compete with our service program. Program, that's part of the new policy and, um, and so thus, you know, is it something that our food service staff have the time and do we have the capacity? And is there a, like, what is the cost versus what is, uh, the revenue piece, right? I mean, there's, there's a lot to consider because someone has to maintain and we have to order and, yeah, all of those pieces, so it, it'll just take us some time to work through that and see if it's a viable.
Right.
Option.
Okay, I just, I, I, I was gonna do that before and I forgot. Thank you for letting me go back.
The opportunity to investigate it on behalf of the board and bring, um, you know, what we think is best back to you.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Um, let's move on to the financial reports and bills for October and November.
I reviewed those last Friday and would move to accept the financial reports for October twenty-twenty-four and November twenty-twenty-four.
Okay. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll second. Discussion? All in favor? I opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I move to approve minutes from November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting.
Um, you wanna just approve the entire consent agenda or do you wanna just do that separately?
Okay, I'll approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion items, C C twelve.
Um, I wasn't able to attend, but if you have any questions, I will look into them for you. Does anybody have any questions? It was pretty original.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right. Um, board governance policies, the personal personnel administration. Now, I suppose I can't, I wanted to be able to bring that up, but I don't think it can come up for me. Um. So one of the things that we were talking about, Stephanie, you're right here, but I.
I also am not able to.
Oh, you can't get it open? I can't either.
No, it didn't work, it's in my link.
I can't open any of them, I opened them all at home, but I can't open them here. Brainy the links. Can you? Did anybody read through those, Altona ones? Yeah, and that, that's basically, cause last time we were talking about this during our book study. And what we were talking about a little bit was, um, if administration is aware of what the board's, um, thoughts were, their, the values, what, what they were looking for in personnel, um, then they would know kind of when they went into the hiring process, what the board's looking for. This is in lieu of having board members even on the, on the interview committee, because then they would understand where, where this board is coming from anyway. Um, the Altona, um, piece is a little different than that. Um, it gives us, it's more of a, um, more of the evaluation and different things that were going on there. But we did wanna have just a little bit of a discussion on, you know, what our values are when, when the district is looking for new employees. And, you know, it doesn't have to be real specific, but is there kind of some general ideas? And the idea of this is not that this is an absolute. This is for us to have a little practice on having that discussion of what our values are when we're looking at hiring. So with that being said, is there anybody who wants to, um, start it up?
So are you, you mean, wanna be like what we want the new person to value? So I would think especially for this area, um, somebody who's, who values being involved in the community. Um, that doesn't just go to, you know, go to work, go to school teaching, that's it. Um, you know, so that community members can approach them or kids can see them outside of school, so many kids, you know, think the teachers live at school. But they don't go to the bathroom, all the kind of stuff that happens with kids, little kids.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that would be a, something we would look for.
Okay. Other thoughts? I'm gonna just add to Ellen's just a little bit is, um, I, I like maybe of the being in the community. Um, but I'd also like it to remember that regardless of where they are and when they're there, they still reflect on the school district. Um, and that doesn't mean that if, you know, I went to a bar and I saw a teacher there, that I would be horrified. But I might be a little horrified if they were like, you know, sloppy drunk all over the place. I wouldn't, that would be a bother something. Now, I don't know how you can get to something like that in an interview, but I'm just saying that that, I, I think our staff should be professional regardless of where they are. Cause they reflect on the school. And that part of that is just integrity in general. I mean, are we, we're talking about just traits that we're looking for in our employees, in our hiring process, guidelines, something to keep in mind. I mean, you'd run through them, I think, I would run through them and they would not be any of those surprises. You know, you want somebody who is honest and, um, uh, you know, respectful to everyone around them, right? All of their different, whether it's their superiors, the children that they, you know, they should be good role models, right? Um. You know, so there's nothing, God, I'm trying to think of like, if you were to pick your top five or something like that, or top three, that's, it's, it's tough. I, I, I like the idea of continue, like having a mindset of continuous improvement. You know, not somebody who goes to work and like, well, yep, I'm here, I made it, it's good. You know, my kids are in class, that's pretty good. You know, just somebody who wants to continually improve upon themselves and what they're doing for the school and for the kids. I guess that kind of dedication to that, I think is real good, really important.
If I could add a branch to that, like this idea of, um, like knowing thyself and like knowing like who you are, right? So that you can always improve and like nobody is perfect. We all have opportunities to do something better. Um, you know, we expect that, um, in our district. We're talking about our district goals, like we're not meeting a hundred percent of student achievement. You know, we will always have goals to like increase and do better, right? So why would we have nothing less of, um, of the people that we work with? That you understand yourself, knowing what your strengths and weaknesses are, that you can always have this idea and philosophy of continuous, all the achieving improvements.
Um, and that ability to receive feedback too, without, um, I mean, it's, it's, obviously things are, are personal if you care about it quite a lot and I would expect that from everybody who works in this, in this business. But, um, you know, to, to be able to receive feedback in that, from that angle of improvement, um, and not just self-improvement, but improvement for the whole district, right? Um, but like kind of, um, accountability and what, what do I wanna, I'm trying to say like you're not, you're not taking it. Personally, when. Somebody's suggesting an improvement, right? I mean, I know there's a word for that, I just not coming to me. You're not new to our, are you?
I think continuing education is important to me.
It's always changing, right?
Yes, it's almost changing.
Yeah, it would be like. Like a value of innovation, you know, like being able to like. Tap into what's working, what maybe we thought was gonna work, but like strong enough to say, ah, it didn't work. Let's move on to this, let's try to, without just flipping, 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 flipping all the time, maybe. Without having to like, you know, you're not, you're not always chasing the next best thing. But you really understand, like. Like continuing education is grounded in research, it's grounded in outcomes. Best practices, evidence based, you know, whatever you wanna say it, and then like, and then using that to the advantage and. And and be an innovative voter.
Which is sort of a risk taker, yeah, a little bit.
To be able to, you know. Step step out a little bit of the box. And try something new. Um, I don't know what this this is and um, like I know that educators have. Like a a word or a phrase for this, but like, you know, how do you, how do you come up? With a way that with a with a group of collaborators that know that every single child. Like deserves an education and can get an education and can succeed, you know? Um, I don't know, like, I don't know what that's called in in education, but like, it's really just making sure that. When we all do good, we all do good and we all can and and have that.
And everyone can learn.
Yeah. And uh, so I thought, I don't I don't know how you'd like dive that in there, how how do you express this into a value? Or like some kind of like value statement or like a board, you know, like this is our board. Value statement on personnel or whatever, but I know that the language exists and maybe that's why we had this conversation, you know, so that we can. Get get models, like really great models, like from Elton and really great models from like other districts, so that we can come up with the washroom. Yep. Um, and I think. Because of the culture of this school, I think people in general have to come in and not really be afraid to get dirty. Like literally dirty and, you know, dig in the dirt and um, do those kind of things. I think that's an important. Piece for this. This school right here.
Yeah. I'm really pleased to have this conversation too, because you know, you can have. Like leaders that will come and go and boards that will come and go and change all the time. But if we can write this down, then we don't rely on like, well, that's that's the washroom way without it even being defined. Like what a what an opportunity, I think, that we that we have here to to really like make sure that like, hey. Outdoor education is education and it's so important, it's helpful for your math and it's helpful for your science and it's helpful for your arts. Like just being outside is is important for all of our.
Just for your mental wellbeing.
Yeah, yeah, for for our own. Capacity to learn.
Do any of our administrators wanna? Make comment?
I can just chime in that we also use our district mission, vision, our collective commitments um, in the hiring process. And so those are agreed upon by all staff and boards contribute to that community or contributed to that, so that's also a huge piece that's already in place.
I think for me, on top of that, one of the things that I always am very intentional about. Asking questions around is kind of what Tino was mentioning that. Kids come first. When you're coming here to work, kids come first. And always have something that, you know, whether it's a situation question or a direct question, how would you react to or what are your thoughts about this? Um, I'm always looking for somebody who is always willing to stand up for the kids. Uh, to make sure that they're getting what they need. And so that's one of the top things that I've always looked for. Doesn't matter who the kid is, every kid, every day. And that's what I'm looking for when they come in.
Any other comments from anybody?
I like this opportunity to just have like a little bit of discussion and like kind of. Yeah, working towards these next steps to to get some of these board policies down.
And and we can continue on.
Well, I was gonna say, I think I hope that we get a chance to do it next month.
Right, um, was there any piece of this book? That comes to mind that you would like to um. You know, use as our basis. I think the last time it was. From page sixty one where we talked about operational expectation. Global operations, emergency CEO, treatment of owners and stakeholders. This was personal admin, personnel administration, budget fiscal planning, fiscal administration, asset protection, communicating with the board. Communicating with the owners, communication with. With our, we're owners or our clients. Might be an interesting conversation. Anybody else have something to be? Anything there that jumps out at you?
Finance is always interesting.
Yeah, I I was debating whether to talk about financing and because it's just so darn. So it's complicated. I I just feel like it's something that I could use more, whether it's more education on. Um, or just maybe it's more explanation of, I think it's, I think it's both. And uh, and during like some of my financial reviews, I'll like grab Denise or grab Janet and we we talk about like, what's the best way to present this information? What's the best way to do this? And as I've stated in the past, a lot of like the review that I've done is kind of like. It feels very audit-y, you know, um, and I think we're working towards a structure and. Not to make the referendum an excuse for everything that. That uh, happens in the district, but um, we've had a lot of focus on that referendum. Now we get to kind of like shift gears a little bit. And um. And think about what is the best way to present a budget? And to have checkpoints throughout the year on said budget, so that if you notice. And like in education's weird and I've I've like I've I've seen these payments come in, it's like, oh, this very big lump sum comes in and it pays for these things and. So it's it's never on a like very specific structure. So you can't like look at the annual budget and be like, okay, well, we have a like greater than fifteen percent variance here, let's dive in and see why is that fifteen percent right now? And uh, because. The way and the timing of all the monies and all the funds that the district has is just a little bit complicated, but we are working on some really great. Like, I don't know, um, benchmarks, you know, like points in the year, but we can say, this is where we were last year, this is where we're at this year. Variances, there are no variances, like what's, you know, what's the structure, where can we start to see? Like what's going on from a from a budget perspective, and that's gonna be really helpful, especially when we're trying to like make sure that fund balances. Uh, in alignment with what our goals are and make sure that we have um. That we have the budget aligned where we want our district goals to be. And so maybe the conversation is like. You know, like where are our priorities? And that that ties to our long range planning work, like right, cause a good long range planning committee. Is married to. The financials, right, and the budget and, you know, where it's all coming from. How it's being used.
Yeah, so so yeah.
I think it might be timely to have a the conversation about finances. Because we're trying to come up with this structure of how to report back to. Us. Okay, so here's the budget and financial planning section, and these are some of the questions that are included in there. How much risk will be tolerated in revenue forecasting? How should the budget be related to the board's goals and priorities for the year? How should the budget be presented to the board if the board is required by law to approve it? Does the board value a planned year and fund balance and if so, how much? So those are some questions that can be kind of a guiding for us. Um, but then we can talk about some of those things too about how do we make sure that. It's transparent, how that we are. Understanding of where the money is and when it's coming in and when it's going out and. What it's for and our priorities and that kind of thing. Alright, budget and financial planning.
There's two different ones, there's financial planning and there's financial administration.
Right, and I did the same, budget and planning.
Okay.
Is the one that I was reading. Um, and we can do the other budget one after. Maybe the next time, because I think those are all good questions. And um, and like I said, it's not exactly like what we're saying right now is. Our absolute, it's kind of a brainstorming session and.
Well, I think like having the conversation, the structure, you know, the timing couldn't be better because uh. Cause as you're so representative to the. Wisconsin State Education March. Um, it'll be really interesting to. Um, take take a couple of courses and kind of see like where our best practices are, what is our best reporting structure? Taking what what we see as value, you know, for the district and and translating that into some like meaningful reporting structure. Or or board policy or whatever it is that we decide on. So it's great.
So as we are practicing this a little bit on um. A a bit of what our values are and what our thoughts are and what we're what we're looking. To have as far as data and information. I would talk to Denise about when I was talking about Altoona's and she said they brought somebody in to go through and. Change this structure into a governance. So that's something that. But that's something that we can think about too.
You know, just to make sure that it's comprehensive and it's aligned through that lens, you know, when I'm looking at kind of. Um, for the personnel one and this one, it really is like the superintendent will. Like do these things, right, around personnel hiring around, right? So it's a. It's a very specific, um, and you wanna be comprehensive and you probably don't wanna get in the weeds. In some ways, right, that could be too, you know, subjective maybe, you know, so. Yeah, just wanting us to be thoughtful about, yeah, how we do that and I'll I'll inquire with. Some others too, um, to see how they've done that work and and who they've worked with, so.
And I think after we have a few of these conversations, maybe that's something we wanna consider is bringing somebody in and help us. You know, walk through this in a more formal manner. So that's just something for you to just like mull over a little bit. But that was fun. I like that.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Annual board self evaluation. After which, being in love itself is pretty interesting. So we got an option to go for everybody here. And it looks like it's a lot longer than this one is. And I don't know that we really wanna do too much discussion because it's like so many multiple pages.
And do a work in a session. You know, an open session, just focused on this, like a special meeting.
But I think it would be good to look at this in conjunction with the goals that we put together for ourselves. And then see, you know, I. There's definitely some that were um, fairly close. And I. I'm wondering, and some that were just, everybody had a different piece, everybody picked a different se- section, so that was kind of interesting too. But I think that we should maybe either, I don't know if you wanna do a special session, special meeting to just do that along with our. Our goals and see how. That works and see where we're at with it. Not this month.
We have a. Remind me, cause I I looked at um, only the schedule of the spotlights. Um, just briefly, but is there one every month?
But we only have like a couple more sessions of our book study and then we could do a five thirty two and do it like that too. Okay, let's finish our book study and then we'll do this.
We'll do that, yeah. And then you can don't do that.
And should somebody who might not have answered it, couldn't go on there and answer it, could we still do that?
Are there some?
I think there was only four there.
Oh, it looked like everyone was up there. That is interesting, but you're right. Okay, so. Whoever that long arranger is, yeah, we go out and.
Of this? Or the good evaluation for Denise?
Were you said all five digits though?
Well, I had got and everyone did, but clearly.
I know I was late. But I did do it.
Yeah.
I you get it right away, I think I saw. So um. That and. Um, the. Evaluation for Denise. If you can get that finished. And sent to me and I will try to compile those before next month. Okay, now we're gonna go on to individual action items. It approved the financial audit. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the financial.
Is there a second? Discussion. It looked like everything that I found there looked like it was. Everything was done well and. In order. Look, I didn't see recommendations, they typically have recommendations if there are some, but I didn't see any.
Um, you know, it's always, we finally have a third person in the office, segregation of duties, which was always a finding. So that was usually going on that relation. The additional oversight of the board because of the lack of.
Right, okay. Um, any other questions about the audit? The discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. B.
I make them. Moving to approve the twenty four twenty five budget amendments.
Our second um, discussion. We now have a balanced budget with this. Over the year.
Yeah, so we have a balanced budget. We've done a great job and uh, now we're gonna work to keep it better.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. C.
Move to approve the addition. Of high school courses for the twenty five missing school year.
Everybody's been. Okay, one thing that I noticed, it was on the forms that was listed for this year, but it's not starting this year.
They had to get the forms in this year and it's for the next school year.
Okay, okay. So is, I'm assuming. From approving these things, are we approving the costs that went with it? Cause it looked like there was about fourteen hundred dollars or thirteen hundred dollars for one and thirteen for the others, something like that.
Instrumentation.
Yeah, so we're approving that with that, I'm assuming. Okay, any other questions about that? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
We have to do a roll call then. Doesn't the cost?
Have we done that before?
Usually if it's over five thousand.
One of those are over five thousand and even together they're not.
Well, yeah, no, it'd be less than, it's just part of our budget.
Okay, D.
I move to approve purchase of a treadmill placement for the weight room.
A second. Any questions? Would you like to have a um, roll call vote on that because it is.
Yeah, that one will be over five, for sure.
Okay, any other discussion on or questions?
Over five but under seven, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, so uh, long story short, there was a a single treadmill in the weight room. And it stopped functioning and upon further attempts to repair was unable to be repaired, so we've done without it for maybe. And our adaptive um, physical education students as well as of course. Our general population utilized that equipment, so it's been a real deficit.
as part of our community service fund, which is Fund A D. We will have some funds in there that we can use to purchase a treadmill, so it's just coming out of that fund, not on ten, which is how we were able to make that happen. And so Sherry, Collins, and myself did a lot of treadmill research. I consider myself a bit of an expert now on treadmills, and so I think we're leaning towards the wood way, or I think it's wood way. And that one seems to have a great service from Duluth, from Second Wind, and also the rep who is quoting us. So I think it'll be close to seven, but under seven, so just wanted kind of a general amount in the event that we have non-keeper traction, but I came to her yesterday, that's I'm almost positive where we're going to land, and it'll just be great to have something that's a commercial treadmill, something that'll withstand the usage of multiple people every day, so.
And and like staff have access to that weight room and everything.
Yeah, yeah, yes, we're really excited. Actually, we're opening it up to the community and grew. Yeah, I said, there's so many great things happening, I don't remember them all. Yes, so we are working, I felt, with coming up with a protocol, and we are going to, for a fee, twenty-five dollars a month, open the weight room to community at specific times. Their boss will open for me during those times. We have other doors locked, so they can't access the building, etc. to the weight room. So we have some great structures in place. I'll share more of that in January. We're just like rolling it out, and of course, we want to have equipment that's functional, so they can come inside, too.
Perfect, sweet. All right, we're going to go roll call. Ellen?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Amy, yes.
Motion carried. E.
I move to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school district calendar.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. We need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All right, we are hereby adjourned. Thank you, everybody.